My wife didn't say that one for me. Okay, I'm gonna call her the call her time council meeting for Tuesday, July 26. Roll call, please.
William Clevinger.
Here.
Bill Giffens.
Here.
Bill Ham.
Here.
Sally Ratcherty.
Here.
Rich West.
All stand for the pledge.
Pledge and take the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want everyone to know that this meeting is being recorded. Your participation in the meeting is your consent to be recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting on the town's YouTube channel. Now, if everyone in the room and online would please mute your phone, we will get started. First on the agenda is an approval of July 14 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second, motion made by Bill Ham, seconded by Sally to approve July 14, 2022 meeting minutes. Any additions or deletions? Any questions? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the broadband fiber project.
Yes, as you saw, I sent you a memo from the Fiber Broadband Task Force. We have scored and reviewed the three RFPs that were submitted. And based on the criteria and on the factors I've listed in this memo, the task force unanimously recommends that we go with SURF broadband solutions. Obviously, this particular solution was an all buried line fiber solution, which was the preference of our committee after studying this for some months. To boot, the end user package was competitive and it had a locked-in rate so that whatever the resident sign up for within the various packages they offer, their rate will get locked in for the lifetime of that agreement. This solution can also be implemented quite quickly. And it offers some of the users that maybe cannot afford to hook on to fiber, there are options for them to have a subsidized package. It supports schools and libraries E rates, and then, of course, the technical expertise, the engineering design of the system that they would be putting in was something that our task force thought was the best solution for the town. I've suggested to all of you to have a joint work session between the town council and the redevelopment commission. Rich agreed with that and pushed us to do that sooner versus later. I am hoping that August 2nd, which I believe is a Tuesday of next week, would work for that joint session. We have time to advertise that. From what responses I've seen so far, I believe all of you and some of the CRC members have responded that they could attend that. And the reason I want to have that joint session is to talk about how to fund $531,023.17, which would be the town's side of this investment. SURF itself would be making a $796,534.17 investment in the project as well. So to figure out how we do that, I looked into some of the grant opportunities that you've probably heard of, Next Level Trails, Oprah has one. Because the town has MediaCom, that's considered a broadband option, even though it's a cable option and not fiber. That disqualifies us from a lot of the grant dollars that are out there. So from what I've seen to date, and after talking with the CEO of SURF to kind of confirm what I've learned about the grant opportunities, it appears that we probably would not qualify for that. So the joint session between council and redevelopment, I thought we could talk about funding for this. If we accept this proposal and start working on a contract agreement, I would obviously want Jim and our consultant Scott and the task force to remain involved to get through the contract stage because right now this is just a proposal from the RFP that we put out. So there are things that we'd have to work out from a negotiation contract standpoint. But if we could get that done in the next, say, 45 to 60 days, this provider feels that we could be put on the schedule and have this implemented by end of year. So that's just a heads up from a scheduling standpoint if we can work out the contract in that timeframe. Our task force obviously would love to see a more sense of urgency with scheduling, but we have taken a lot of time and a lot of due diligence on this project to date. So if we need to do that through the contract stage, we're all very comfortable with that. I just want you to know that as well. And that's one of the reasons we landed where we're at today, July of 2022. We've been working on this, I think, since last November. So my recommendation is to accept the proposal with the goal of entering into contract phase and identifying funding for our portion of it.
Two questions. Jenny, first, and I assume because the RFP was written this way, but certain that is not only a fiber provider, but they also provide the broadband services beyond that. Early from some earlier discussions, you know, there were two separate vendors involved, you know, cableing and broadband, and they do both.
Yeah, they would. So depending on what package you pick, but there would be support, like local support if there's a service call. All of that would also get worked out with our contractor and our contract in terms of what would the end user agreements look like. But then the end user, the resident, would get to pick what package they want. There's packages ranging in price up to, I think, $80 was the high end.
And the second question is, this pricing is based upon the geographical boundaries of the town of Culver?
Yes.
But anything beyond?
Yes, there was an option for each of the providers to, if we wanted to also have them put this at the academy and around the lake. And SURF did provide an option for that. There's additional cost, obviously, to that. And we can take that number to those entities if we'd like to and see if they want to work out a contract for that.
I just wanted to make sure that the $531,017 or whatever it is, is for service just to culver?
Yes, incorporated limits, yep. And they were given a map of that ridge just as part of the RFP.
Okay, so you would like a motion to?
Accept.
The?
The recommendation of the broadband task force, accept the RFP recommendation with the goal of getting under contract and funding the project in the coming couple of months.
Then it would be accepting the contract from proposal, rather, from SURF.
Yes.
Need to mention who we're accepting.
So we're clear on how we fund that? Want to go that far at this meeting today? I mean, I agree with with the?
Well, I think that's the discussion, that's the reason we're gonna have the joint meeting between council and CRC.
I do think if we are accepting this proposed agreement from SURF and not just the fact that it's recommended by the broadband task force, we know we're gonna be on the hook for $531,000, whether it comes from CRC.
Where it comes from, another thing.
But I think he's asking, do we want to accept a condition upon funding? So you have it out in case you have issues with funding.
Yeah.
I appreciate the work the broadband task force has done. I think it's up to your recommendation, but I just want to make sure we can come up with the dollars to do it.
Yeah.
And not just commit tonight to $531,000. Now, if we can figure out, we're short.
Yeah, I think pending funding is a good way of putting it.
Except, yeah, with SURF pending funding.
Still move.
Got that, Karen?
Right.
Motion made by Bill Hammond, seconded by Reese, the week, accept the broadband task force proposal with SURF pending funding. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the BZA council appointment. We have a vacancy there, and this is a council appointment. It's our motion by a council member after the interviews were made.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint John Criss to the position.
BZA open?
Yes, open position at BCA.
Is there a second? I second. Any discussion?
Could you spell the last name for me? I'm sorry.
C R I S.
C R I S, I believe there's T and T.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded that the council appointment for to the BZA will be John Criss. Motion made by Sally, seconded by Bill Clevinger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Same sign. Those four ayes, one abstention. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is Family Dollar.
Yes, let me see if Eric is online. Eric, are you online by chance? Okay, he's not online, so I'll go over it with you. I sent you guys a request letter from Eric Weston, who is the property owner at Family Dollar. He leases that property to the Family Dollar store. And in 2019, when we did public engagement on the Trail Project State Road 10 there, he gave some feedback to both Jonathan Leist and they talked via email and they talked via phone. I've been able to confirm the email conversation. But he had given feedback that he was not opposed to reducing the speed on the highway, but opposed to taking out the deceleration lane. He also had a sidewalk already there that he knew was, you know, a short distance away from where we were putting in the trail. He wanted it either connected to the new trail or removed. I can see where Jonathan passed on some information to the engineer, but also told him that's not necessarily going to be the case, depends on NDOT, depends on the design of the project. For whatever reason, that sidewalk was not part of the scope of the project. So he comes here once a year in July. Last July was, this project was underway, but really at the earliest stages, so he didn't physically get to see entirely what was happening. This July, he came back, of course, that project's completed. We're in the midst of closing out, you know, already closed out. So he called me, not happy that the original sidewalk that they had to build when they developed the property is still there. It does look strange, as you can see in the pictures, there's an old sidewalk and then this branded larger trail sidewalk. And so, you know, I explained to him that it wasn't in the scope of work. From what I could see, that, you know, I agree that he probably had some input and communication, but it doesn't necessarily mean NDOT or the engineers or the town are gonna agree with it, that I'm not authorized to just take care of it for him. There's a cost removing a sidewalk, obviously. And so I said, you can come talk to the town council and make a request to, because he'd like the sidewalk taken out, the original one. In the meantime, I've talked to Bob. Bob agrees that it probably should have come out and should have been part of the project plan. And though, for whatever reason, it wasn't. And Bob also feels that we can take care of the work ourselves. So Bob and I are recommending that the town go ahead and remove that as long as he signs a waiver that he doesn't hold us liable for the fact that we're gonna take it out and put some soil in its place. We usually, if we're gonna do work on someone's private property, we have a waiver signed. So that's our recommendation. Mr. Weston was going to log online and explain to you what I just did and ask you for the same request.
So the sidewalk comes up, comes out, and then we fill in with dirt and grass?
We basically put soil and seed down.
I don't see that's why.
And then he's, he's responsible for whatever happens when we're done with the work. And we would have it written that way. I think Jonathan had to write one of these in the past. So Bob and I thought we'd try to dig that up and run it by Jim before we do anything.
Is the sidewalk in the state right of way?
No, it's on private property. Now ours is in the right of way, the one we put in.
Yeah. The old one is not.
And in some cases on this project, we've taken out old or we've taken out part of a driveway or whatever, but a lot of times NDOT doesn't want you to go beyond the right of way. So there are many cases where we don't mess with something, like someone on South Main Street wanted us to actually build a wall on his private property when we put in that the trail on South Main Street. We weren't going to build a wall on his private property and NDOT probably would not have allowed us to use grant dollars for that either.
Right. So your motion is to allow Bob to take out the?
I don't have a motion, but it's just a recommendation that Bob's crew take out the sidewalk.
For a motion.
Yeah, that you authorize us to do it, and we will not move forward with it without him signing a?
These two sidewalks are running parallel?
Yeah.
Right.
And it would look a little odd to connect them because there's like five feet between them, maybe? Over faith?
Oh. New. Old.
I can't do anything about the deceleration lane because that was, you know, that's a state road and that was part of NDOT's decision when we wanted to reduce the speed. Yeah.
So is there a motion to allow Bob to take out the sidewalk?
I'll make a motion to allow Bob to remove the old sidewalk on the Family Dollar property in a, just on his real lead.
I know, the lead.
Real. Release that she needs.
He tried to log on and add issues.
Is there a second to Sally's motion?
Second.
Motion made by Sally, seconded by Bill Clevinger to allow Bob to take out the old sidewalk at Family Dollar and replace it with soil and seed. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Same sign. Motion carries. Next, we need to open a public hearing on ordinance 2022 day 004 water rates and charges. Second, motion made by Rich, seconded by Sally to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2022 day 004 for the water rates and charges. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Same sign. Motion carries. I think a sign up sheet, if you want to talk, is all gone around, Mike Stallings added. So thank you very much. If anybody hadn't signed it, please do so. Thanks for bringing it up, Shazie. Okay.
So this is one of those times that you don't hear very often in that we're lowering the rates for water usage. I know. It's good thing Jeff's here in case he needs to pop the AED.
And it's a big, it's a big rate reduction.
It is, it is. I mean?
Twenty-seven cents is a triple.
No, it's not even that, so. I think the average user is gonna save about thirty cents per month. So.
This is something that came down from the state, just so everybody knows.
Correct. The state eliminated the utility receipts tax, which is 1.46% on water sales. And so in doing so, in eliminating that tax, they are, they've directed cities and towns to remove that tax and pass the savings onto the property for the rest of it. So that's what's happening. And the ordinance has been online for a week or two, so. But to your next bill, the bill coming out this week, we'll have a small.
A problem to inflation.
But stay tuned. What goes down?
At least for a little bit, we'll give you some.
Any questions from the public?
How much is that gonna reduce your revenue per month?
Um, over the course of a whole year, it's probably costs us more to make these changes than it's gonna, than it's gonna impact us. So it's basically, we end up spending about $6,000 paying that utility receipt tax because basically it's not any revenue of ours. It's paid to the state. So we're just a pass-through agency. So it's, it's usually around $6,000 per year that we're paying.
The state.
Why don't we just kick the money, buy lottery tickets for the whole town? No, as the state would get a hold of us not reducing the rate? Trust me.
We have more.
Well, Kevin had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does it remove the tax from the sprinter fees?
It is on all water usage. So any, any fee associated with water that utility receipt tax has been factored out.
Good question. Thank you, Kevin. Any further questions? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Rich, seconded by Sally to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All close, same sign. Public hearing closed. Next on the agenda is the reading of 2022 day 004.
It was even a lot to you.
Well. Would the public like me to read it? Pardon?
Are you alone?
I'm alone. Ordinance 2022 day 004, and ordinance amending and restating ordinance 2016 day 017, 2014 day 010, and 2008 day 010, being the ordinance establishing rates and charges for the use of services rendered by the waterworks system of the town of Culver. And it goes through the meter rates, minimum charges.
And that's all that's?
And app fees, everything.
Nothing else is seen.
Nothing.
Just that first page.
Just the first page.
I believe you, Bill.
It will be up here for anybody to read after the meeting.
It's online.
It's online.
I would want to leave coordinates 2022-004.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Bill Hammond to approve ordinance 2022 day 004. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Same sign. Motion to suspend the rules, pass on second, third reading. Motion made by Bill Clevinger, seconded by Rich West to suspend rules and pass on second, third reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Same sign. Motion carries. Very good. You'll see the reduction?
I'm right.
On the bill that she received in the next couple of days.
She needs that.
I know she does. Next is, we have an unsafe building update. The unsafe building committee met 5:30 this afternoon. We have two cases before us. One of them was 435 South Ohio Street, Farland Cooper residence, the other is 709 South Abyspo, which is a Russell Appalat Trust property. Results of the meeting, Coopers were here, Bob and Gudia, and stated their cases, the improvements they've made to the property in the last 60 days. And we have pictures of the property improvements by Chuck. The board agreed to ask them to further clean up the property a little bit, get rid of some bushes and get rid of some debris that's laying around the property. And we have another board meeting in a couple of months, and so they'll come back at that time. With that done, we'll just move forward, everything to date, they've really done everything they said they would do, so. Put shingles on the roof, cleaned up, got the dumpster out of there, got vehicles off the property, et cetera. So that will continue, but probably, hopefully, the next meeting it'll just be, you know, please keep the property looking respectable. The other one, 709 South Abyspo, based on what had been done since our last board meeting two months ago, or what really had not been done, the board affirmed the demolish, demolition order, and we're gonna proceed with going through the proper legal steps to get the property demolished. So we'll see what happens. It will now go to court, and it'll be much like what happened on Bob's Country Bunker, the marquee at the movie theater. And Jeanette will argue our case as to taking down the entire building. The Russells did not show tonight, and based on what they were supposed to do, HVAC and plumbing, tear down a breezeway, just five or six things that they said they told them they had to do by day before yesterday, and then plus come up with a remodel plan to further fix the house up, not being done. That's why we're moving forward with the demolition order. That's the result of the unsafe building. Next on the agenda is town manager report.
Before diving into the report, I first wanted to bring up the Fiverr Head Agreement. Jim had given me a change to one section of the agreement. I'll read that to you and then let you know that the Marshall County Fiber LLC that entered into this agreement agreed with Jim's change and made that change. So I've given Bill a copy because it's basically got just his name on it, and I would be asking you to authorize Bill to sign it. The change that Jim wanted was in section three, paragraph B, he changed it to landlord and tenant agree that this lease may be extended for like or similar terms as the parties shall agree. The option periods shall each be for a period of years as agreed upon by the parties for uninterrupted use. Or, I'm sorry, I read that last line wrong. The option period shall each be for uninterrupted use for a period of years as agreed upon by the parties. So it's a clear indication that a future council can be more specific about whether or not to extend the agreement. It gives a way out, so.
And it gives a way out, so.
Everybody knows the initial agreement is for twenty-five years. And so what this allows future councils to do, that, you know, doesn't automatically need to do for another twenty-five years. You know, into this first twenty-five year term, if they want to do five years or ten years or bail or find somebody else, that possibility arises.
And the purpose of the Fiber Hut is to allow R E M C and R T C to bring fiber around Culver to get to more rural areas. It also would be, it will have the space needed for our provider to have fiber in Culver, so. Assuming we move forward with SURF and we can find the funding, they would be also using this Fiber Hut through an agreement with this company. So that's all written into the agreement, then any provider we pick could use the hut as well.
Mr. President, the first proposal had a twenty-five-year term, and then it had four options, another twenty-five years, so. Extending out.
Add infinite.
By the way.
So they had no problem with Jim's change, maybe exact wording change in the agreement that Bill has. And I'm asking you to authorize Bill to sign that. Assuming that you do, their plan would be to get under construction for this in probably September or December.
I'll make a motion to approve having Bill, I guess, sign the Marshall County Fiber LLC in Culver.
Second.
Motion made by Sally, seconded by Bill Hand to approve the Marshall County Fiber LLC. Would allow me to sign the new discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I am skipping over the trail projects that are pretty much status quo. The only reason we have not closed out Phase Two Lake Max, just so you know, is because at the end of this month, they're evaluating the sod. And what sod will get replaced or what will not. Everything else has been done, including taking down signage, so that's the only reason it's not officially closed out yet. And if they do replace sod, they will be responsible for keeping that alive for, I believe, thirty days, according to how Endot sets that agreement up. So skipping down to the proposal for new well, we weighed, he has signed that agreement, and we had that notarized. So I will get that recorded, and that will move us forward on being able to test on that site. Alley behind Ohio Street, I'm still waiting on title search on that, but I would like to just get your permission to write the homeowners and update them that we're looking into that. And so that they're not worried about complying with the late July deadline on that. And I think most of them are keeping track of that with us, but I'll make it official in writing. V S Engineering.
Let's get that motion right now.
Oh, yes.
Let's have a motion to notify the residents on Ohio Street about what we're doing with the title coming.
And extended demolition deadline that we previously issued.
Well, we're not extending any demolition.
Or notify them that we will extend it at some point in time. Yeah.
But I need a motion. You want to back?
I'll make a motion that we allow Jenny to notify the homeowners on Ohio Street that are affected by the easement.
Alley.
The alley that's behind Ohio Street, to keep them informed and her progress and the company's progress on title searches.
Motion made by Sally, is there a second?
Second.
Made by Sally stating ongoing to allow Jenny to notify the homeowners on Ohio Street, the process with which we're going, there's a title company to alleviate their anxiety about having this. The original demolition done by the end of July. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
On the V S Engineering proposal that I've kept on the Town Manager Report for a while, this is what we're applying for Community Crossings Grant, and I just want to give you a heads up. Part of the requirement for community crossings, you guys probably remember, we did this in January. I will need to give you a letter that says we will have the match dollars for that community crossings grant, even though we applied for this before and we had that letter saying we have match money. This is a new application, so new letter, and Bob and I plan to give you that at the next meeting. Park Crossroads Stellar Project, we have a pre-construction meeting set up for next week, August third. Shannon will be here. And that's just to go over with Thomas Excavating Preconstruction Schedule and conversation about, you know, what's going on with that project. The Beach Lodge Building Drainage Project, Amber and Bob have connected on this with Thomas Excavating, which is the company that got the lowest bid on the park project. Rather than he's ready to go on this project, but rather than have him start it right now in the middle of busy season, we want to take care of that in a few weeks, probably simultaneously with Park Project. No need to bring some big equipment, take up parking spaces over there and get in the middle of everything, so. That's the only reason we're not moving forward with that right now. Under Emergency Services, I know I have the usual people reporting on that, but I just wanted to bring up the fact that I sent you a memo that will go to the commissioners and the sheriff, assuming you approved the memo I wrote, explaining some of the issues we're having with nine-one-one dispatch with equipment and that sort of thing. I also got on the commissioner's agenda for August first, Jeff Kuhn is going to go with me to that meeting. Invited Terry and Wayne, if either of them want to attend, all three of them have filled me in, thus the memo I wrote. If you're good with that, I'd like a vote to authorize me to go ahead and send that now, so the commissioners and sheriff have a heads up.
There a motion to allow Jenny to turn the Emergency Services memo to the Marshall County Commissioners? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Bill Hand to allow Jenny to send her Emergency Services memo to the Marshall County Commissioners. If they'll have it prior to their August first meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. And I want to thank Terry, Jeff, and Wayne for helping to put that together. It's a bit of a complex issue and differs by department, but they all have one thing in common, and that's wanting to protect our residents. Under Town Manager Updates, developed Culver Main Street, had their event last Friday. They hosted Main Streets from across Indiana. I thought it was a really well-done event, and the board members of Main Street, some of you council members, Rich, Bill, really appreciate everyone who attended and the work that took place to make that happen. I thought it was a really positive experience for everybody. Also wanted to thank Tracy, who's our Main Street Board Chair, for helping to organize that along with Amber. Really pleased to also see Amber involving our intern, Georgia, giving some exposure to some of our park staff, to some of the leadership locally and also at state agencies. I thought that was a really good example for for Georgia to see that type of activity. Already went over in the memo for the county. The comprehensive plan is underway, as you all know. We've started public engagement. MACOG is coming to Thursday's Crossroads Culver Meeting. So they will go over an activity with that steering committee, as well as next steps. We want the public to fill out the survey and the postcards that we have circulating. The survey is at culvertwentyforty.com. If you all haven't heard about that, we've been publishing it on T G L, social media, et cetera. But if you haven't seen it, we also can print hard copy for people who want to take the survey via hard copy. I have had someone do that up here at Town Hall. I appreciate the fact that someone would take that effort who's not necessarily online. So that's coming along, and also MACOG has reached out to some of the stakeholder groups. I think some of our department heads have been contacted, the Plan Commission has been, et cetera. So they've been interviewing key stakeholders. Community Crossings Grant, I've already explained, we're eventually going to need a support letter. We'll present that to you at the next meeting. E M B obviously was the low bidder on that. Broadband Task Course, I think we can comfortably skip over that. And really nothing new to report for Crossroads Culver or Marshall County Crossroads, except for Blue Zones. The Blue Zones deadline for brick and mortar projects is coming up, August fifteenth. The deadline for programming projects will be probably mid-September. They're saying a month after brick and mortar. So the Ready Committee for Crossroads is meeting this week. And I've also been talking with Burke Richardson, who is still interested in a housing application. So what they're telling us, knowing this deadline is so quick, and they just did their roadshow the last couple of weeks to get information out. If we want to submit a project, whether it's one of the ones we already did last round, or a new one, we will not necessarily have to have worked out yet matching dollars, private investment. We would need a support letter from Town Council and/or Redevelopment Commission to make matches on any grant application we would do. Knowing how challenging that alone is, I'm looking at meeting with Al Collins about housing to see if we're going to go ahead and move forward with that application. I will meet with Kevin Berger to see if he would like to move forward with the original housing application. And then if the Ready Committee would like to move forward, I will be bouncing in here at your first August meeting. And/or put it on the joint work session meeting with CRC and Council as another agenda item. Because at the very least, I would need a support letter saying the town and/or CRC would make a match on any project we do. Now, for a housing project, that match would look like infrastructure, utilities, expenditure agreement, the sort of thing CRC's been considering for the housing development on the south end of town. That would serve as a match. But I do think they're going to have a second round of these. So I'm not exactly anxious about or excited about trying to get a bunch of applications in. So we just need to get on the same page really quickly if we're going to submit. And that's going to take a little bit of work. You will see the county, Marshall County Crossroads Team is supporting application for three key projects that are, one is programming, that's Blue Zones, that you guys have supported. Freeman has now made a financial contribution to that, as well as Plymouth. They are, the Crossroads Team will go before the county, asking for a support letter there. They're also supporting the learning, lifelong learning network. Has a career skills building project they're going in for Ready. And then Ansela Marion College has a nursing lab project that they're going in for. All three of those are considered regional, county-wide type of projects. So I think Crossroads will help present those to the county leadership. They had a bunch of one-on-one meetings with county leadership already. And then they're going to go before them at their next two meetings. So that's the news on Ready. And I think I think that gets me to the end of the report until I remember something in five minutes from now. Any questions, though? Because I know I sent you a lot of prep emails for tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, and the changes I gave you guys on streets and parking, some of you have given me modifications or feedback. We'll officially put that on the agenda for the first August meeting. And I've probably, some of you have commented back. I just got Karen's done, and I need to get back to her because she went through and commented the document as well. And I think we should be ready for the next meeting for public hearing on it, or public input, or, it's a moral ordinance read, though, isn't it? Because we're not changing fees, Jim, we're just changing ordinance. So it's really an ordinance amendment.
Correct.
And we'll just put it on the agenda. We don't have to have a quote public hearing, but you can take public input, obviously. So.
clarify, we exchanged an email, so I wasn't clear. The there are other ordinances that will continue to exist besides the ones that are presented here.
Yeah.
Just to, I guess, to see that we have a scope of what we, some of our requirements, that I suggest that it either, would changes be integrated into the existing, which let's go and continue to stand. So in other words, no, it is a real an ordinance on parking on the street here. It's not included in this, but is carried over from the previous ordinance.
All parking is in this one. So everything you see in black font is original ordinance. Red font is the changes. Now, there are ordinances, though, that are kind of related to streets and roads online. I can send you a link.
Everything is.
Yeah, but you'll even see, like, we didn't address, like, snow and emergency routes and stuff like that that are related to parking, if you will. We left those the same. We literally just went street to street to make sure what the ordinance said is consistent with what our signs say. And a couple places they weren't, or in a couple places we also wanted to change because it's not working.
Form the head of research. EMS.
Hello. I have several things for you. Start with the first thing, giving my ambulance will be arriving the end of August, take delivery of that. Plan on having it in service towards the end of September. We take it down to the state conference on the twenty-first of September, and we'll have the ambulance showcase there. I'm actually one of the speakers at one of the lecture series. I was invited this year to participate in that. And so we were going to have the ambulance on display, along with me speaking down there as well during. Lake Fest went very well. Overall, we did have need for two ambulances over that weekend there. We had a call for service of eleven calls over that weekend period, that three-day period there. Now, even though we had a little bit of a washout Friday night, and, you know, Saturday and Sunday kind of picked up, we did have, you know, a little bit of a need, with six of the calls actually related to Lake Fest. And actually, three of those all, three of the calls all came in, came in within like fifteen minutes of each other. So having, having the two crews there allowed us to respond quickly and expeditiously, and allowed us not to have to have incoming departments coming in and further delaying the care that we possibly could be giving to someone. So, you know, we're going to refine it a little bit more next year. Learn some different things, and we're going to look at that. Last year, I recognized like twelve days out of the year for different events, that we are going to have different ambulances on, whether it's standbys for football games, standbys for cross-country events and whatnot, and then Lake Fest and some other. and then Lake Fest and some other events throughout the year as, as the, as the population swells in here. So there's potentially the need to have the department there with a little bit more staff for that. So we're adjusting as that goes along. The next thing is, is I do have two interested parties in the ambulance, our used ambulance that we're going to be trading in. Nothing has been firmed up, nothing has been concrete. They're looking at some pictures, they're looking at some, some details about it, looking at some records of the maintenance that are on them. And we haven't had no final discussion as to pricing or offers yet. Do I, do I think that there's going to be an offer? It's very hard to say at this time here. But there has been some interest in it so far. And so that is still a work in progress. And even though that we will be getting the new one in the end of August, we still have the other truck until basically the end of September. So we do have some, we still have some time here, even if it has gone. The final thing is, I would like to have your motion of support. Over these last couple of years with the pandemic and the COVID and everything, prices have swelled to unprecedented levels over these periods of time. In my bid, I have a section there for tag along. Now, we wouldn't be thinking about a tag along ambulance at this stage of the game because we wouldn't need a truck until 2027 would be the, the next time. But the build out times now, the lead times are 20 to 24 months. Where before the pandemic, it was six to nine months. You bid it the same year and take delivery the same year. The only other problem is, is that the prices have skyrocketed over the, over these last couple of years here. Price ranges have gone up from some manufacturers, some parts of the manufacturing line of the ambulance is from nine to nine percent to 30%. So overall, we're seeing large jumps in the actual prices of the components for the ambulance. Not to mention only, not only the chip shortages that is there. As a whole, the ambulance industry as a whole, United States roughly produces about 3,000 ambulances. So with that, that is various different manufacturers from Ford, Chevy to International and Freightliner and whatnot of those trucks. Ford is the biggest producer of those ambulance, heavily ambulance bodies. But we're just a very small component of that market, throw forward. One thing that we're seeing with the price, pricing with ambulances, GPC, governmental price concession. Years ago, that was up, upward about $5,000. Now they're looking at maybe having that rebate only at $500. Be taken off the cost of the chassis. Those are because the unprecedented demand, the demand is there for the chassis in every marketplace that they have. The manufacturers believe this is going to take about five to six years to the ship to ride itself in sense. So even if we were to wait a couple of years to bid again, we risk having a price increase of between 50 and 75,000 on top of the current price that we have given to us. This is a time sensitive issue. We have a not to exceed amount of 318,000. There is nothing due today, nothing is due until we take delivery, which would be the first half of 2025. So it would give us time to look at what funding options we're going to do, how we're going to proceed over this next two and a half years. And I've also spoke to Marlene and she is an agreement, whatever you decide as a council, she will go along with it. She felt that the need was there. And it actually, we're putting our name on a list instead of any more being there. Any one time we have accidents, loss, we're going to struggle even if we don't have the vehicle order. Or if we do have an order to get another chassis, they are just very linked. It's pleasure what they would like to do, but I'm looking for a motion of support.
Well, the big, the big changes I understand it too is this 318,000, whereas the last one was what, 250, let's say. We had to put a down payment in this one, no money down and it's just.
The last one was a down payment to help us push it along the line because of some other things. It did not go that way because of the shortages from, the chip accelerated itself over the, over the course of the time. So there was, it was very hard. So Ford, the way the Ford allocated each chassis went by your GPC. So you could only, you could only order, they could only order the chassis if they have a GPC.
What's the GPC?
Government price concession. Now, it also is kind of correlation to the VIN number, which is the Ford fleet identification in fact. So, so Ford was prioritizing GPC over, over regular. Now Ford in a given day with the amount of chassis that they build on the E-series and the F-series, they could produce everyone that they needed in one month. But the RV industry, the moving industry, the utility body industry, far, far more uses more of those chassis. And so they were trying to satisfy every end user of these. And so, you know, some would say, well, you could go out and get just any old Ford cutaway chassis. No, you could only get one type of Ford cutaway chassis, even though there's several different models. And that has to do with how the hookups were. If we were to put a different cutaway chassis that's designed for, let's say, a RV, then any warranty, any issues that would have with it would be voided by Ford because it's not upfitted to the annual standards. So.
And so you're asking us tonight to?
Allow me to proceed with this and allow me to go ahead and order this. And then we would work out the details over the coming years and how we're going to pay and, and.
Split it with Marlene or whatever.
I would like a couple of weeks to actually think about this. Only problem with that is good to the end of the month and then there's another price increase. This is locking in the. This is locking this price in to 2025.
That's also locking that company.
And that's what they're trying to do is they're trying to structure their orders through the period of time. And in doing so, it helps them with their purchasing and long-term planning.
So would you be budgeting 23, 24, and 25? Like 50 some thousand a year, basically, and Marlene would be doing that as well? Would this be setting aside money?
I don't know how Marlene will be doing that. We already budget a certain amount, we can't increase that amount over the period of time as well.
When did you have this information?
I got it just a week ago.
Why are you just telling us about it today?
I wanted to bring it to you in a meeting. I'm sorry I didn't send it to you, but.
Well, that would have been nice because I don't feel that we should make that decision just out of the clear blue. No, I would study it or look into it or even think about it. That's a lot of money to just instantaneously say, yep, we'll do that. And after being on the ambulance service for 35 years, that's not the way to do business. Try to get the people that are going to be making that decision a little bit of a heads up.
I did speak to a couple of the, of the, of the members here about that, looking into it. But I'm sorry, I didn't get anything to you in writing beforehand.
Another question. Phone numbers, same as what it's been, my emails hasn't changed in 12 to 15 years.
Jim, we're looking at a, a work session with CRC, would this be, would it be better to put it on that agenda? Give you guys a week because we're, we're talking about a week from today during, doing that joint session.
It's already up. You're saying this.
He's under the gun. What, what do you think the price increase might be?
They're forecasting anywhere between 50 and 75. There is, there's just too much unstable, that's unstable with the different manufacturers.
No, I mean from July to August.
July to August, you know, I don't, they, they haven't, they haven't released any of that, so.
I'm not sure that we can actually lock another council into an agreement to not, basically, we're not bidding the next ambulance purchase. We're just giving them carte blanche.
And I'm just coming to you tonight, if you do not want to go with that, that is your, that's your pleasure. And we can definitely look at this in a couple of years. That, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. I was just bringing to you this, this offer that was looked into.
I don't know that we can actually legally bind another board into a decision because we're not, we're taking away.
Right.
The ability for a future board to actually bid an ambulance purchase. I don't.
And a future board couldn't undo what.
And they can't undo what we do, you're asking us to do today.
Have you ever seen this before, Jim? I'm just curious.
No, but because normally you got to bid the, you know, these kind of expenditures out. I, I suppose if you determine it at a finding that it's special equipment, you know, you could make a case to proceed without bidding and following the typical bidding purchasing procedures. But I, more so than binding a future board is my concern about proper purchase procedures.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you do this without, without the funding? Or I mean, subject to.
Yeah, but it doesn't sound like that's going to do them any good.
Yeah, that, that, I don't think that comes into play. Because you're basically committing the funding that you're allowing him to.
Yeah, and, and it's not, you're not accepting bids.
Right.
You know, if you had bids from two other companies saying that this is what our price is going to be in 2025, so that we can, even then, I don't know that you could get another.
That's a valid point.
I don't think we. I don't know whether it's allowable or not, but I can see it as a good idea.
Well, must the council's wishes? Is there, is there a motion to allow them to do so? If there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll make the motion to allow them to.
Go ahead. So I have one question. So the lead time has changed, so there's a paradigm shift here, right? So it's no longer business as usual as it was last five years, 10 years, 20 years.
That's correct.
It's, that's all gone.
That's all.
So, you know, are we going to not have an ambulance or?
Well, no, no, you will have, you'll be putting that out for the bid at that time. Let, let me interrupt you, but go ahead.
Normally, we purchase a new ambulance every five years. And I don't know what year, the other, basically each ambulance is replaced at a 10-year mark. So we're buying one this year. And so we're going to buy another one in three years? And that's what you're saying?
Yes, that, that's what's saying. The, the last one here was delayed by two years. And then so that's why this one was even before the whole, the whole shift. It should have been bid, it should have been bid out two years prior to that. But like I'm saying, I mean, if you don't feel comfortable, you don't feel comfortable. I just was bringing this to you as an opportunity. If you don't want the opportunity, I'm fine with that, but I just felt that I just needed to bring it to you. If you don't, if you do not want to go with it, we can do that. We can go to bid in, you know, 2025 to push it out to 27. I mean, we can do that.
Well, you could ask for bids now for a 2025 delivery or 2026 delivery. You could do the same thing, but you'd be including more than.
Yeah.
One company.
But the, the thing is, is that the, the ambulance, the ambulance that we have now, not, not the one that we're going to, you know, run up, but the other ambulance is the one that we're going to replace. And what we're doing, if we delay this, we're pushing that ambulance in service out two to three years.
It all depends when we would bid. I mean, if we were to go to the other bidding cycle, if, if this was back before the pandemic, we would put it out to bid in 2026, but with a delivery in 2027. Depending on what time of the year we do it. We could even do it in, back in the, two years ago, it was six to nine months for delivery. So you could, you know, bid it in 2027 and get it in 2027. If that's just not the case anymore. So you're, you have like a two-year window right now of when it would be delivered.
And the ambulance you're, you're suggesting we replace would be on the 10-year cycle in 2025.
No, it would be, it'd be, it would be earlier, but it would be, it would still be, I would still go on a 10-year cycle. But it would be, we would still put it on a 10-year cycle moving forward.
So the ambulance that you're talking about replaced in 2025.
It would be eight years old.
So Jeff, are you putting a buffer in or, it's, it looks like there's two years there extra. He said three years. And now it sounds like the ambulance won't be 10 years old until five years.
Ambulance would be 10 years old in 2027.
Right.
Okay. They're only going out to 2025 right now. And so that's where I was at. Typically, we would go, now we'd have to go start putting out to bid in 2025 to get it in 2027.
Which would cost 50 to 75,000 more.
Correct.
Got it.
Now, granted, it could go up just as much as it could go down. I, there's no, there's no magic.
Yeah.
Ball that will sit there and say.
Assuming inflation will continue and, because it has recently, I get it.
I, I mean, I appreciate the information and the opportunity to look at the option. I would still prefer we stay on that 10-year cycle. And then, and then, and I don't have, if we competitively bid it, I don't have as much an issue with making a commitment, given the fact that that's our history. Places use rigs every 10 years. And so if we have to make that commitment in 2024, 2025, or 2027 because of the purchasing cycle and the availability of things, I, you know, I think obligating future councils to that is also good to, to proper purchasing and bidding process. I don't have any budget problem.
Well, we've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second to Bill Levinger's motion? Not here, not here in a second, the motion dies.
Thank you.
So.
That's all I had.
Yeah. Thank you. Terry. Oh, your turn.
I just have good things to say through July, Fourth of July. Like the Fireman's Festival all went very well. We've had better years, we've got a lot worse years, we've had good, nobody got hurt, you can't, that or, our town stepped up this year and donated prizes to our Fireman's Fund, which I want to thank them all. Hopefully we get some papers to that effect too. It's not an advertised raffle that we have, we don't go out and solicit tickets, we just appear there, you buy tickets. The people that come every year are the ones I see every year back. I just want to say thanks to all those people. That's about it.
Wayne's probably got FOP tonight, so I'm sure he's not on. Amber, are you on?
I am.
We're right ahead.
Okay, um, so just as a lot of other people have referenced, Lake Fest went really well. So kudos to Andrea and her committee for a really, really well-run event. Everything went smooth on our end, from the park end at least. So thank you to all of them and for their cleanup post-festival. Everything got out really quickly, including like the porta-potties and the water jugs for vendors. So thank you. including like the porta-potties and the water jugs for vendors, so thank you. Um, other than that, so we are currently in our last full beach hours week. Um, the following week, so the first week of August, our hours do decrease from twelve to six P M. And that is our last full beach hour week. Um, we will be losing a lot of our, our staff to school, so we are approaching the end of official beach season. Um, as Ginny had mentioned, um, we did re- receive release of funds from Okra for the park playground project. Um, so we will be having our pre-construction meeting on, um, August third. Um, along with that, we will be hoping to break ground for the project fairly soon in August. Um, we kinda wanna hit the ground running with it. Um, that will cause, um, the farmers market to, to move locations. Um, I have been in contact with Tracy and Chad about that relocation. We're kind of playing around with it a little bit, um, but we will be sure to keep the public posted on what we ultimately decide. Um, just based on playground equipment and lead time, uh, due to supply chain issues. Um, it's looking like the project won't, won't get done until the spring of twenty-twenty-three, but we were sort of expecting that outcome. Um, but yeah, really excited to get that project underway. Um, other stuff, hopefully, you all have had an opportunity to check out the new mural on the West Pavilion. Uh, special thanks to Develop Culver for applying for that grant and making everything happen. It was really successful. We've had a lot of positive feedback. Um, a nice historical nod to Lake Max and Kucky. Um, and, uh, so yes, thank you to the Bridge Collective for coming down and doing that work. I've even had outreach from Visit Indiana about the mural, so it's getting a lot of coverage. Um, other stuff, we have a concert on Saturday, um, so that will be from six to eight P M. at the amphitheater. Our outdoor movies have been a huge success. We're getting on average to sixty to eighty people who attend each outdoor movie. So, we're having a lot of fun there. Um, but I think that's everything. I might be forgetting something. But I think that's it right now.
Thank you, Amber.
Amber, this is Bill Hame. Uh, I've been asked by a couple citizens, how frequently are those outdoor movies? Um, because I know they, some people donated money for the screen.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we did get, uh, funding from C, CRC and Gift of Worms, and then the park budget to cover that, uh, screen. Um, we do a once-a-month movie on, on a Friday that aligns with our employees' schedules. So, um, so all the dates, all the dates are set and they are on the, um, Culver Event Magnet. So, check that out, because they're all listed there.
And was it, it, was that the initial intent that people were told, um, that gave to the cause? That it would be once a month?
Um, I don't, we hadn't promised anything, um, but I mean, that's kind of how we do our concerts, so we figured it would be good to do our outdoor movies. And I'm gonna be honest, the event itself runs until, I mean, with knockdown, we're there until usually twelve-thirty A Ms. Um, it's only something we can handle once a month right now.
Get it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
Bobber, Bobber, you on for utilities?
I am on, and I have nothing for you. You have something for me?
Thank you very much, sir. Boards and Commissions, Plan Commission. Anyone from Plan Commission? B Z A. Anybody? Redevelopment.
Very busy.
Uh, nothing, uh, much except the, I do wanna let everyone know that the redevelopment commission meetings are going to be changing from five P M. to five fifteen P M.
Five thirty?
Five fifteen.
Oh, five fifteen?
Yeah. It's splitting the difference between the conflict that one member has and the conflict that two other members have. Yeah, right, so we split it in the middle.
Compromise.
Yes.
Jury Commission.
Yes, um, we have met and we've put together a schedule. And we've got all our pricing from Hooters Tree Service. And the forty thousand dollar budget we have, we can remove eighteen trees. Um, there are about another four or five trees, but they'll just have to wait until next year. Most of those are added on, sometime this spring or in the summer. So, the, uh, company we use, Hooters Tree Service, um, we were informed last week, uh, that Bill Bailey, who is the owner of it, is retiring. And he has sold the company to a party up on fourteen B Road that has a song. And so, they, they take down trees and they, they, basically, they take the wood back. If it's any good, it's not rotted. They use it in their song. So, uh, we met with them last week. And, uh, we have a meeting, which we mentioned is a meeting Saturday, Friday morning. And, uh, we will discuss this, the two of us actually met with these people. And, um, I was very impressed with, I made a joke and they said, their trucks don't even have dents. Because most people with tree removal services drop at least one log on the truck. So, um, it's a, it's a father and a young man and then a friend who's a partner. And again, they own this song or a property. So, um, we have asked them to contact Karen and bought their insurance or tickets. And they're in the process of doing it, and I haven't heard anything about them yet. And we will meet Friday with the rest of the commission that shows up and decide, uh, if there are any questions, what those questions are. They have agreed to, to, um, use the pricing that, that Hooters had given us.
Okay.
And by the way, they bought the name, too, so they're using, Hooters Tree Service will continue, but it'll continue.
Very good. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Bullets report.
We have a couple of claims over twenty-five hundred dollars for your approval. The first is the U S Geological Survey. That's for the lake age commitment that we have, um, the Academies and Lake Max and Kucky Environmental Fund will contribute to, two-thirds of that, and then we are, we end up on the, excuse me, four-thirds, but I'm gonna go ahead and get that paid. The second is for Wild and Humphrey, Clevinger and Cerise, for three thousand thirteen hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents. And that's for the unsafe building work that Jeanette Cerise has done for the town. Uh, the other one for the same company is for eight thousand five hundred eighty dollars and sixty-seven cents. Those are for gym speeds and other things. Um, and finally, Miller Insurance, it's seventy-five thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars. That's for the insurance that covers the liability property, um, vehicles, a number of things. Um, Joe Stiles is our new agent as of last year. He came down the other day, went through the policy with me, explained some of the increases that they've had. Um, some of it is on values for other properties that have increased. And so, for replacement, they've increased, um, the cover, you know, the, the cost of, of coverage has increased and for some of the, um, the vehicles as well.
And we over-considered bidding that out?
We can. I do know that Joe goes ahead and bids it out to different companies, like the actual policies. He bids those out to different companies. If that's something you wanna do, I'm gonna need some. So, it's not something.
Well, I think, I mean, we already did the deal this year.
Right, yeah.
Forward, I mean.
You made bid for professional services, or you're talking about bidding to companies?
Using other interns agents or.
Other age companies.
Yeah.
So, professional services.
Yeah, yeah. Professional services, there you go. Okay.
So.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, claims over twenty-five hundred?
No motion.
Motion made by Bill Clevinger, second by Sally, to approve the claims over twenty-five hundred. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Same sign?
That's aye.
Thank you very much. Internist's report.
Yeah, and I just have that we're still working on the preparation for the Plan Commission, four fifteen, Lake.
Halfway point of the transcript.
Okay.
It's a nightmare.
I'm sorry. But we're needing to get to the end of that, so I, uh, I think I sent you a note maybe next week.
Yeah, I closed my door for like four hours today. I'll close it again tomorrow and hopefully be done.
It's just because we weren't here, we don't know who some of the speakers are, and I assume you guys, or Don would.
Yeah, I, but I've recognized them so far, and I've gotten through about half of it.
Okay.
Um, and where I.
Exciting.
Where I doubt, I just look at Don's notes to make sure.
Okay. But that's, we're still working on that. That's all I have.
Is there anyone, uh, online or in the room for a utility shut-off or ordinance violation? And they're seeing none. Let's move on to citizens. Sorry?
Amber raised her hand, but I'm not sure if that's a national.
It's not. It's for public input. She wants to have public input.
Moving on to citizen input. Is there anyone online for citizen input?
My hand is up.
Go right ahead, Amber.
I, I was ahead of the game. Um, sorry, I, I did remember something. Sorry, Bill, going back to your comment about the outdoor movies and the amount that we do. Um, I'm assuming that came up because we're promoting our outdoor movies and there's three listed. I do my summer advertising different, I do seasonal advertising, so there will be movies post-summer. Um, and those are listed on the event magnet, so if there's confusion there, that's the reasoning.
I'll, I'll follow up.
Okay, I just, I wanted to clear that up. It's not just the three mo- movies. There's more in addition.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
Anyone in the room for citizen input? Patty?
Uh, Patty Stein, five oh six East Lake Shore Drive, Culver. Um, our home is, um, ten feet away from the, um, fire department, our building, so you know where we're located. And over the last couple of years, I have been in contact, well, once, you know, twice, with Chief Perry Wakefield. I didn't wanna read the letter I sent to him, uh, the date of December ninth. We have owned the home adjacent to the fire station for forty-two years and consider our firefighting neighbors a great asset to call. The building and its additions are constantly in need of repairs, and we realize that is not why our firemen have volunteered. They're not there to fix the buildings. But we would like to request the windows on the west side of the main building to be bricked up or replaced. We know you have, uh, considered this in the past. I know Terry has looked into it because of Kurt Lucas, the mason, was there last year, um, measuring, measuring them. But other things always come up and, uh, you felt they were more important, which they were. So, we're asking that you take another look at the windows and consider breaking them up or replacing the windows as you see fit. They're in terrible disrepair, and I've got some pictures for you here. Now, this is ten feet from our house itself, and we've looked at it for forty-two years, never bothers us that much, but it's pretty bad. And there's a couple of, just, um, blown up a little bit. There you can see. There are seven. And the reason why it's never taken care of is we're the only ones looking at it, really. So, this is kind of a personal thing. But it is a, a town building and it's, it's, uh, they're pretty bad.
Is this out of your window?
Yeah. No, um, it isn't.
Okay.
But the, the window reflects onto our window. It's up close.
Nice mirror, it's a nice mirror.
I see, yeah, I see that.
Well, this is town property. So, let's, thank you for pointing it out to the town and we'll try to come up with a.
Yes, thank you.
Suitable solution. Any other citizen input? Jerry, Gary?
Jerry, Justin, in five twenty-five. I had a couple of follow-ups, things that we brought up, we brought up before, um, in the council meeting. One was about the street grates on Main. Any, we moving on that?
They're fixed.
Oh, very good. Um, other thing was, uh, the lighting on top of Main Street over Cafe Max. Any progress there?
What about it? You mentioned that to the CRC, CRC meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wasn't here.
Yeah, I did. I mentioned it here, but I didn't get into detail because. And I haven't, uh, oh, Max Electric installed it, but I, I haven't, uh. I wasn't sure who's donkey depending in that tail on, so.
Are these Christmas lights or are these?
They, yeah, the building lights.
Oh, the, oh, the bill, oh, the building. I thought you were talking about the Cafe Max sign. I'm sorry, the, 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 they're, it's got it. You did do that.
So, were they falling from the roofing job she had done? Is that, they're just.
The idle, the idle section is out and part of it is.
Yes, and the, the lights aren't on.
Well, some, the bulk of them are on that one strip.
I was thinking that about three or four years ago, there was a, when that was originally put in, that there was a discussion as to who would handle the upkeep. And other than going through
Old minutes?
Old minutes, they, you know. They haven't racked it yet on this year.
So, CRC, the bottom.
Yeah.
At this point, a chunk of them have gone out.
Right. It, it was indirectly part of the facade program.
Yeah.
To improve that area of Main Street. Um, CRC funded the lights that, um, basically outline the, of the buildings. And two blocks on Main Street, I think, um, that block and then the block north of there.
Right.
Um, there were some initial problems with installation related.
Right.
And the contractor was required to fix those. And I don't.
I always think so, his general lead upkeep was going to be up to, and that's the part I can't.
Up to the, up to the building owner?
I don't know whether it was the building owner or whether it was another.
Okay.
Because if it's a facade grant, that would be under the building owner.
It wasn't, it, seriously, it, it, it was the facade improvement that it didn't fall under the facade split and how much, um, you know, to be paid for by the building owner. There was no cost to the building owner to do that work.
It was sort of like being for the Christmas lights.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that part of town, you tell, they're really attractive at night when they live. Things to do to keep it going. Uh, and then finally, I had a follow-up on the maintenance of the lake trail. Phase two specifically. And I noticed, especially today, that when people mow their lawn or break, clean debris out, it, a lot of it just gets thrown into the trail. And it's not necessarily an impediment, but it's extremely unattractive. There was a lawn mower today, it must have had five or six inches of grass, and it just blown, was blown right onto the trail, which makes it very unattractive and, uh, just sort of, uh, uh, corrodes the, 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 uh, the, the use of the trail and the attractiveness to, to people to use it. Then finally. Then following that up, um, I think even Amber got a concern with that. There are people who um, are impeding that trail, either through vehicles, through their garbage and recycle bins or through other items. And in fact, there was one specific example that had all three in front of the trail yesterday. And there was no way anybody could walk or ride. You'd have to go into the street to get around. So I don't know if, if there is a plan enforcement for that or if it's something that uh, would be outlined with marking or what. Just hate to see the trail turn into uh, as a convenience for the homeowner.
Well, people who live along the trail have garbage cans. I don't know when Republic comes through here, if that arm will reach over that trail to leave the can on their property.
Technically, you're supposed to put them at the curb anyway. So in some places there's green space and other places there's not. It depends on the segment of trail. But technically also we have an ordinance. You have to take your trash can in a certain amount of time, so that can be enforced. Um, I can't really enforce clippings on the sidewalks because that's all over town. Um, you know, now a car blocking or we do have an ordinance for that. You can't have a vehicle or a golf cart on the trail.
Right.
If it's in their driveway, that's one thing. They're allowed to park in their driveway. But if it's across the trail, it's another thing.
I have watched people avoid the trail because of it. And it's, i- if you start to um, give people excuses not to use it because it's, it's got uh, conveniences blocking it, then the whole.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just telling you from an enforcement standpoint, what can be enforced and what can't be. I, I absolutely don't disagree with you. I believe sidewalks should be that way too, even if not.
Part of it has to do with, you know, the homeowners, right? And their property and the sidewalk in front of their property.
Maybe they just need a, a visit by an authority to say, hey, there's plenty of room on the street to park. Why are you blocking the trail?
I also think that we discussed it in the last meeting or, or the one before about incorporating into our budget process this year, talking about the trail maintenance and what the plan is for that is, we didn't have an answer at that time. You don't have an answer tonight, but I think we, you know, it is a, a, we're starting to address this question, be that trail.
And then finally, I'd just like to thank you very much, thank the, the council for um, more than likely submitting a, a letter for grass mowing on Pissbo and Akron. There are two lots. One is a vacant lot. The other one is two oh five Akron that had uh, lawns and, and, and shrubbery and debris, just you needed a yardstick to measure it, not a ruler. And the other thing I would like to thank you for is um, putting that speed sign on, on South Main. I think that has helped tremendously the digital, um, made our run. I notice a complete change in, in attitude on drivers on that stretch. Appreciate that. At least paying attention to that.
Yeah, that, that's due to the police department, so give them kudos for doing.
Following up on his comment, you're considering that parking restrictions, you might want to add a line, part, no parking at any time on the trails.
We already have that in ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, we added that a year or two ago.
Okay.
You, you also can't have a golf cart on it. So, but we could actually put it in the parking one too. I, it could be in two different places.
Just bring attention.
Yeah, the more places it shows up, the more likely it might actually get called.
Any other citizen input online or in the room? All right, time for council issues.
Yeah, hi, sorry. This is uh, Coast Nikotarius over at three oh six North Main Street. I have been noticing some activity over at one oh three Lakeshore Drive. And I'm kind of curious if the town is still pursuing in purchasing the building or has that uh, went away? If you're able to answer.
We are, we are not pursuing that, no.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. I do appreciate it.
Oh, you did get it. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Any other citizen input online or in the room? On the council issues. Rich?
Um, just echoing some comments made earlier, um, Amber's comment about, and other people's comment about Lake Fest this year. I do want to um, gradually, and thank Andrea and her committee. Um, I think they did in terms of communication and planning and uh, coordination. Was a great improvement over previous years and I appreciate those efforts. Um, Kenny had also mentioned Main Street Exchange Group that was here on Friday. Do uh, members of Main Street organizations from around the state, as Jenny had mentioned. And they were very impressed with, with being here in Culver. I think it gave those of us who did some of the planning on it, an opportunity to go back and look at some of the accomplishments that um, that we had in the past several years. Typically, we go from project to project to project and just sort of look onto the next thing and hopefully making progress that way. But in retrospect, to go back and take a look at, at, at the progress and the, the events that have been made, um, communication. It's something we're always looking on, but I think that uh, we're impressed with that and I think it, I think all people all are united with the town and I, and the, I think it, I think it continues to advance our positive reputation. So good. I'm beating the staff from all over the country. That's all I have for our post. Thank you to all Culver to, um, to the people concerned involved in it and all of the staff. And leave ship and well spoken.
Thank you for the Chamber of Commerce, Dave. My attaboy goes Culver Police Department, crack down on golf carts. Been writing many, many, many tickets. I agree. Very good.
Do you know what the most common violation is?
A lot of it's probably driving on state roads, isn't it?
Yes, and underage kids drive.
Yeah. I mean, they, on Friday night, they park down at uh, the hardware store and wait for people to come out of Frida's. And.
Go onto the side.
Go, go, well, no path. There's no path. They just get on the street and go. They don't have license plates on their vehicle. State highway, well, yeah, yeah. Uh.
You have to.
Only thing I've got is uh, want everybody to know that at the library, we've got a Waterways exhibit, which is a Smithsonian exhibit. Uh, that's there right now and it's very well split up. Debbie Palmer with Environmental, uh, actually Cucky has uh, got us a grant and fine display and it's going to be going on through uh, the Tuesday after Labor Day. Get by and take a look at it. It's uh, really very good. We had a ribbon cutting last Friday and we had people come on the Main Street Culver to come by and check it out and uh, it's very well worthwhile.
Local Waterways?
No, it's Waterways.
The traveling exhibit.
Traveling exhibit from the Smithsonian Institute.
For all of the continental U S, North America.
Yep, yep.
Wow.
It's connected with Bonnigan.
With the Bonnigan.
Wow.
Very well done.
Okay.
On both floors.
And how long is it going to be here?
Through uh, the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your fans.
That's right.
Well, I will.
That's all I got. Is a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second.
All of you in favor?
Aye. My grandson just finished the Missouri River in a kayak, Great Falls, Montana to St. Louis. Wow. Two thousand miles.
Yeah.
Sixteen two days.
An entire summer project.
Yeah, and instead of deciding to stop at St. Louis, he's now thinking he's going to head on down to the Gulf of Mexico. Figuring he'd be out of money by now.
Out of mustard.